Good morning. Today is Friday, February 12th. We have reconvened from our Thursday, February 11th Kern County Planning Commission hearing. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ashley. Mr. Judge.
Here.
Ms. McGiffney.
Here.
Ms. Gidmore.
Here.
Mr. Sprig.
Here.
Mr. Hall.
Mr. Hall.
Here.
Ms. Ovion.
Here.
Mr. Murphy.
Here.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the meeting from last night, I would like Mr. Murphy just to acknowledge our translation that is happening.
Madam Chair, good morning, fellow commissioners or other commissioners. Yes, we do have the translation services again that are available for anybody that would like to hear today's proceedings in Spanish. On our agenda, we have a protocol to participate, and in that protocol, it has the contact number and the ID. Again, callers will be able to call that number, and then they will be able to hear a live translation of the entire meeting in Spanish. So again, I would refer them to our protocol and our agenda, and that information has all been posted on our website.
Great. Thank you so much. Okay, so we will pick up where we left off last night around 11:00 PM with the voicemails, and I will trigger the back room to go ahead and start playing this.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Perez, E-L-I-Z-A-B-E-T-H-P-E-R-E-Z. Mass Planning Commission to have approval over British and I think concerning ordinance 2020-8 focusing on local oil and gas permit. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas will harm my family and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. They must be[300.13]
Good morning. Today is Friday, February 12th. We have reconvened from our Thursday, February 11th Kern County Planning Commission hearing. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Ashley? Mr. Judge? Ms. McGiffney? Ms. Gidmore?
Here.
Mr. Sprague?
Here.
Mr. Hall? Mr. Hall?
Here.
Ms. Ovion?
Here.
Mr. Murphy?
Here.
Thank you. Before we proceed with the meeting from last night, I would like Mr. Murphy just to acknowledge our translation that is happening.
Madam Chair, good morning, fellow commissioners or other commissioners. Yes, we do have the translation services again that are available for anybody that would like to hear today's proceedings in Spanish. On our agenda, we have a protocol to participate, and in that protocol, it has the contact number and the ID. Again, callers will be able to call that number, and then they will be able to hear a live translation of the entire meeting in Spanish. So again, I would refer them to our protocol and our agenda, and that information has all been posted on our website.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, so we will pick up where we left off last night around 11:00 PM with the voicemails, and I will trigger the back room to go ahead and start playing this.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth Perez, E-L-I-Z-A-B-E-T-H-P-E-R-E-Z. I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revision to Title 19 zoning ordinance 2020-8 focusing on local oil and gas permit. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas will harm my family and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. They must consider an advanced sustainable solution such as green jobs as we move into the future. I am opposed to the pollution of our air and water that will lead to the passage of this ordinance. I'm opposed to the negative health effects that will be caused by results of this action. I oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Estefania Ramirez, E-S-T-E-F-A-N-I-A-R-A-M-I-R-E-B, and I live in Lamont, California, and I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-8 focusing on local oil and gas permits. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas wells will harm my family and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. They must consider and invest in sustainable solutions such as green jobs as we move into the future. I am opposed to the pollution of our air and water that will lead to passage of this ordinance. I'm opposed to the negative health-
Hi, this is Sharon Briel, B-R-I-E-L, and I am calling in opposition to expansion of the 67,000 new oil and gas wells on prime agricultural land. I am very concerned about the quality of the air in Kern County. We have many, we have the worst air in the whole United States. I'm also concerned about climate change and the role that fossil fuels play. And lastly, it's making bakersfield an unattractive community with poor air quality, and it's an equal opportunity polluter. It affects everyone in our community. We need more green jobs, less fossil fuels. Please do not support this measure. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Rosario Terry, R-O-S-R-I-O-T-E-R-R-Y. I live in Bakersfield, California. I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-8 focusing on local oil and gas permits. I am opposed to this ordinance. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas wells are harmful to my family, our neighborhoods, our schools, and our local agricultural communities. San Joaquin Valley already has one of the worst air and water quality and safety challenges in our state, if not the country. This permit will further harm our health, our environment, our agriculture, and our long-term economy. That is why I oppose this ordinance. This plan for the long-term future health and economy of our county and for the fate of our children and our grandchildren's children. Better said, make the shift and begin to invest our resources in smart and green technologies and jobs. Thank you.
This is Calvin Parker in Bakersfield. All you guys have this underlying science all wrong in this CO2 stuff. A CO2 change doesn't cause a temperature change. It's the temperature change that causes CO2 change, and also CO2, when it absorbs, it doesn't trap because of the molecular vibrations, which kick the heat out into the atmosphere, which goes to the outer, goes to outer space to comply with the second law of thermodynamics. My number is 396-9528, Calvin Parker.
Hi, my name is Marbella Avalos, and I live in Bakersfield, California. I want to ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance focusing on local oil and gas permits. I think it's important that the planning commission knows how volatile the oil and gas labor industry is, and I believe Kern County could benefit more from clean green jobs. And I'm also concerned with the health effects that more oil and gas in Kern County would have to communities of color. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Stephanie Rodriguez. I live in the Fresno area, and I am very much opposed to the oil and drilling ordinance. Air pollution from oil and gas is a threat to everyone's health. I am very concerned that the drilling and burning of fossil fuels is adding to more health impacts, and Kern County needs to invest in good paying green jobs that are safer for their community and for the greater good of our state. So I am opposed to this, and I hope that that resonates with all of you. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Maroka Christian, and I am calling on the planning commission to stop the passing of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance focused on oil and gas local permitting. By allowing the passage of this ordinance, the planning commission and the Kern County Board of Supervisors will be putting profit over human health. Air quality in Kern County is already rated one of the worst in the country. Air pollution from oil and gas drilling is a threat to families' health. Not only will the toxic chemicals harm families nearby, but they will also act as a catalyst for rapid environmental decline and speed up climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air that families breathe and the water that they drink. Sustainable solutions such as green jobs should be considered and invested into as we move into the future. I oppose the pollution to our air and water that the passage of this ordinance will cause. I oppose negative health effects that will be, that will be outcomes of this action. I oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lucia, L-U-C-I-A, and as a youth and minor that lives in East Bakersfield, I ask that the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions of Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance focusing on local oil and gas permits to be put to a stop because I feel like it is a threat to my family, and it makes me really scared in regard to like climate change and all of that, and I do not want that extra pollution in my hometown. Thank you. Bye.
Hello, my name is Laura Rothenberger Hyder, L-A-U-R-A-R-O-S-E-N-B-E-R-G-E-R. Stop drilling new oil while it's blowing from the south. I get irritated eyes, allergies, pee, dizziness, and, but also the more well casings in the ground, the greater the risk of contaminants flowing into and polluting drinking water wells. Most of Kern is disadvantaged. Don't give them the additional burden of no drinkable water. It's not from Fresno, uh, but, um, most wells there are fracked, and the safety of fracked wastewater used on crops was not tested, only the use of steam extracted wastewater. An environmental working group found that samples of fracking wastewater from area industries contained an average concentration of radium of a thousand times the public health soul. I don't want this used for aquifer recharge and not on crops, and definitely not for potable drinking water. Industry has a record of being careless and sloppy. 92.4% of original scientific studies in 2016 to 2018 found that fracking is associated with harm, potential harm to health. Concerned health professionals have deposed and positions for social responsibility. Read the rest of their article. There's, it's on, there's no way they can, fracking could be done faithfully according to their opinion and, and, I'll talk to them more.
Hi, my name is Doug Rose. I'm calling to voice my opposition to propose Kern County oil and gas ordinance, which would allow for the permitting of over 67,000 new oil and gas wells in the region. I'm concerned that the allowance of only one environmental impact study report is insufficient to justify the approval of the permit. I'm concerned about the release of fugitive methane during the drilling and the burning of fossil fuels as contributing factors to climate change. I'm concerned that the air pollution of volatile organic compounds during the extraction will continue to adversely affect the impact of health of nearby residents, mostly of color. I'm concerned that the produced toxic wastewater from fracking operations used for irrigating crops poses a health risk to virtually all Californians. So it's time for Kern County to transition from brown jobs to good paying green jobs that are safe for local residents and for the planet. Thank you for considering.
Hello, my name is Kaylee Cho, K-A-Y-L-E-E-D-H-O-E. I live in Bakersfield, California. I have my entire life, and I am against expanding oil and gas and adding new wells in Bakersfield because I am concerned about the climate change that is caused by these, the fossil fuel industry, and I'm also concerned for Bakersfield's economic resiliency. It's the known fact that Bakersfield relies on agriculture and oil, and according to the Bakersfield market analysis that's on the Bakersfield Planning Department's website, we, even though we have less direct agricultural employment than Kern County, shocks to agriculture and oil still ripple through Bakersfield's markets. So I don't understand why we are expanding oil and gas in our, in our city when our economic resiliency is already low, and we should be funding other economic development projects to make it to where Bakersfield's economy is more resilient against these changing factors. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Luis Maniagua, and I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revision to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-8 focusing on local oil and gas permits. Toxic chemicals from, or any toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas will harm my family and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. They must consider and invest in sustainable solutions such as green jobs as we move into the future. I am opposed to the pollution of our air and water that will lead to passage of this ordinance. I'm opposed to the negative health effects that will be caused by results of this action. I oppose this ordinance. I am from Delano. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amanda Melstein. I'm a primary care pediatrician in Richmond, California. While there's not much oil and gas drilling where I practice, my community is home to five major oil and gas refineries, where the oil and gas that is drilled in Kern is ultimately sent. As a pediatrician, I see every day the ways in which climate change and the local air pollution caused by refining and combusting oil and gas is impacting the health of Californians' children. In my first five years of practice, I've already had the following experiences: advising a 10-year-old boy to quit his school baseball team because the air quality is so poor that it's exacerbating his asthma and allergies so severely it's making him sick; paired for a premature baby whose parents fled a wildfire hours before his birth; comforted a 16-year-old whose cross-country championship was canceled for the third year in a row because of climate-fueled wildfire smoke; this week, a study from Harvard showed that fossil fuel air pollution is responsible for the deaths of eight million people in 2018 alone, about 20% of the total deaths that year. California, Kern County, the world, we are at a precipice. Can we stop drilling for refining and combusting fossil fuels although we stay committed to them, thereby committing ourselves and our children to a future filled with extreme weather events, unbreathable air, and conditions that likely won't support the continuation of human life on Earth? This ordinance would be a disaster for public health in Kern County, particularly for low-income communities of color who live next to oil wells and are already harmed daily by fossil fuel pollution. I ask you, as a pediatrician and as a caregiver to my own children and to children in California, please do the right thing, stopping drilling in Kern County.
Hello, my name is Janet Atkinson, J-A-N-H-A-T-K-I-N-S-O-N. I live in Truckee, California. I'm calling to state my opposition to doubling oil and gas wells in Kern County. This is a matter of affecting climate change, and since I live in the state of California in a high-risk area, whatever happens in Bakersfield and Kern County also affects here because of the fossil fuel impacts on climate change. Also, I am very concerned, as I believe everyone should be, about environmental justice in that low-income communities in your area are already disproportionately harmed by pollution, and that is real people suffering. So I, I hope that you will take my words in opposing the oil and gas wells in your county to heart as it affects everyone everywhere. Thank you so much. Bye-bye.
Hello, my name is Matt Hichu from Bakersfield, California, and I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-8 focusing on local oil and gas permits. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas wells will harm my family and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water that we drink. We must consider and invest in sustainable solutions such as green jobs as we move into the future. I am opposed to the pollution of our air and water that will lead to passage of this ordinance. I am opposed to the negative health effects that will be caused by results of this action. I oppose this ordinance.
Yes, hi. My name is Barbara Andrews, and I don't live in Kern County. I live in Santa Cruz County. I'm not a wacko Santa Cruz person. I'm a logical, intelligent, upset individual who's afraid of what we're doing to the planet and our children. Not just my thinking on that, that's 99% of the scientists worldwide. Climate change is real, it's really happening. I don't know how some of you could actually sleep at night with the new proposal. Haven't we done enough damage already to frontline communities, frontline communities, whatever they're called? I do have relatives in Kern County. I, I just think this proposal is so unimaginative. It's so old-school. I don't understand why people don't wake up. Our own governor is not waking up. We might just have to wake him up. So, again, it's a change. I don't care about gun control, I don't care about abortion, I don't care about, you know, voting rights, I don't care about immigration, I care about climate change mostly, and so should all of you. So I don't understand what's driving this, except for money. Can't you get more imaginative and figure out a new way to make money? Thank you for listening. I'm sorry. I'm just very upset. I have grandchildren, and I'm worried for them. I have my relatives in Kern County, and I'm worried for them. So, excuse me. Thank you for listening. Bye.
My name is Elizabeth Savento, E-L-I-Z-A-B-E-T-H, Savento, S-P-A-V-E-N-T-O. I live in Bakersfield, California. I'm calling because I am really concerned about adding additional oil and gas wells here in Kern County, just because research shows that a direct link between oil and gas production, wide range, it has a wide range of adverse health effects, including chronic asthma, cancer, and high-risk pregnancies in preterm births among women, all of which do happen in the city, in Kern County. And also because people of color make up about 92% of all Californians who live within a mile of oil and gas wells, and who are the most burdened, overweight of color, suffer pollution-related health problems at disproportionate levels than their white peers. I really am concerned about climate change caused by burning fossil, burning fossil fuels and drilling for them, and I think we need to do a better job of taking into account the fact that the earth needs us to do a better job of taking care of the earth. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is David Chu, and I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-8. Chemicals from permitting oil and gas wells will harm our, harm the community and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerating climate change. Locking in additional fossil fuel assets will increase carbon emissions for decades to come at a time we need to decarbonizing our economy and our world. These toxic chemicals will also pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink, harming- frontline communities, especially communities of color, the most. And we must also consider investing in sustainable solutions and green jobs if that is the future, in the decarbonized future we need to move to. I am opposed to the pollution of our air and water that this passage of this ordinance will lead to, and I oppose the negative health effects that will be caused by the results of this action, especially on the most vulnerable communities and majority communities of color. I oppose this ordinance. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Christina Chiano. The name is spelled C H R, disregard the previous message that I left and use this message for the meeting. I'm calling, I'm not a resident of Kern County, but I'm calling to express my profound disappointment that there's a desire to like create sixty thousand-plus gas and oil wells. The drilling of these such wells in the Kern County communities would be a horrible tragedy in that we have climate change, we don't need to argue the science is real. We're in California where there's lots of fires that are out of control, that they're getting worse every year. That should pretty much tell you that climate change is legitimate, that does exist. No more burying your head in the sand, and therefore, if you do acknowledge climate change, or even if you don't, you have no business, these companies have no business drilling more oil wells. Gas and oil, that's, that's the way of the dinosaurs. That's outdated. We should be switching over to new infrastructure that's green, that keeps a lot of safe, good-paying jobs that are going to help us with our plans for the future in producing and eventually cleaning ourselves off of gas and oil. There's no reason for drilling for more oil and gas wells. It's ridiculous.
Hi, my name is Ashley Valera, A S H A Y, D E, F A, L A, S A, R O, S, A. I am calling on behalf of, I am calling on behalf of myself and my family to stop the ordinance of expanding oil in Kern County. As a constituent of Area Five, I, I really believe that we need to prioritize greenhouse energy jobs as well in Kern County, clean air. As a daughter, as a daughter of someone who suffers chronic asthma, I know firsthand that the damage that dirty air can cause, and even living here in Kern County, not being able to run on any given day because the air quality is so bad, needs to stop. So I call on the Kern County Board of Supervisors to stop the expansion. Thank you.
Jane, I am based in Tehachapi, and I am calling to oppose the expansion of oil and gas in Kern County. Please do not drill more wells for oil or gas. This personally affects me because Bakersfield is already the most polluted city in the United States. And although I live in Tehachapi and often it's quite clear, the area is clean up here, there are still days where it gets incredibly polluted up here and it's difficult to breathe. And I just know it's gonna get even worse as time goes on, especially if you're planning to double the amount of oil and gas wells. For example, this summer, we experienced the worst fires in like California history. I personally don't have an air conditioning in my house, our, our system cannot handle it. So we rely heavily on swamp coolers and keeping the windows open to cool our house during the day. During the fires, we weren't able to open our windows, we had to keep everything closed. It was unbearably hot in our house, and, and we were dehydrated all the time, we couldn't sleep at all, we couldn't open the windows because we couldn't breathe. I'm sure you all know this is a side effect of climate change and a direct effect from emissions of carbon in the atmosphere. So please, please, please consider the community and the public health of Kern County, do not expand oil drilling. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elizabeth Bordolato, and I am a homeowner in Bakersfield. I own five homes there. I am calling to voice my opposition to the proposed Kern County oil and gas ordinance. I do not want to see permitting of thousands of oil and gas wells in the region. I am very concerned about fugitive methane, I'm very concerned about air pollution, I'm very concerned about climate change, I'm very concerned about the produced toxic wastewater from the fracking operations, which is just detrimental to the health of all Californians, but particularly for those in Kern County. It's time for there to be good, green jobs in Kern County, not to give reliance on fossil fuels, which need to go the way, they need to go into the past. Thank you very much for considering my message.
Hi, my name is Daniel Andriano, A N D R I A N O. And I am firmly, firmly against the proposal of adding more gas and oil drilling to the city, the county. It's just our, the pollution, it's just so astronomical in this county, it should not be a consideration. And I hope you listen to your constituents that are sick from the bad air, that have so many ailments. My dad has almost died multiple times because he has very bad, sorry, I'm so a tad nervous, but um, to consider green energy, and we need to consider those that are most, uh, those.
Hello, my name is Kiara Marres, K I A R A M A R E S. I'm a resident of Bakersfield, California, and I ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to the Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-A focusing on local gas and oil permits. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas wells will harm my family and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change, something that Kern County is all too familiar with. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. If you don't care about your constituents, just say that. They must consider and invest in sustainable solutions such as green jobs as we move into the future. Our residents deserve better health and better opportunities. I am opposed to the pollution of our air and water that will lead to the passage of this ordinance. I am opposed to the negative health effects that will be caused by the results of this action, and I oppose this ordinance, and I really hope you listen to your constituents.
My name is Krista Shenum. My name is spelled K R I S T A S H E N U M, and I'm a California native. I am calling today to ask the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-A focusing on local oil and gas permits. You know, at the time, we really need to decarbonize our, and stop burning fossil fuels, and this change will just like really harm people for generations, including myself and future generations. I'm also really concerned about the toxic chemicals from all this oil, gas drilling, especially the impacts on local health and including air quality and water quality. So I'm really opposed to the negative health impacts and the pollution that this will cause, and I greatly oppose this ordinance. Thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Zidana Camacho. I'm a resident here in Kern County, specifically Delano, who are the college student and A D M delegate. I am here to ask the planning commission to stop the approval of the Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance regarding the local oil and gas permits. It is really important that we keep our, our communities safe, especially during this time of the pandemic, and approving this ordinance and permitting oil and gas wells will only cause more harm. These toxic chemicals will further pollute the water we drink, the food we eat, and the air we breathe. I strongly oppose this ordinance as it will lead to catastrophic consequences on the environment. Please put the health and safety of our communities over profit, and do not approve this ordinance. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Elizabeth H A V E, E L I V A B E P H, H A V E Y. And I work for the city of Orange, Auburn, and I'm asking the planning commission to stop the approval of revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-A focusing on local oil and gas permits. Toxic chemicals from permitting oil and gas wells will harm many of the families that I work for and act as a catalyst for rapid environmental degradation and accelerate climate change. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. They must consider and invest in sustainable solutions such as green jobs as we move into the future, and opposed to the pollution of our air and water that will lead to passage of this ordinance, and opposed to the negative health effects that will be caused by the results of this action. I oppose this ordinance very strongly, and I believe it is to the jurisdiction to do better for the community.
Hi, my name is Daniel, that is D A N I E L, and I am a California resident, and I'm, I'm really, really asking you to please vote against this new ordinance to expand oil and gas wells in Kern County. You know, I think that the trajectory is really clear as far as the prospects for the future of the oil and gas industry, and they're not good. You know, the whole world is transitioning to sustainable, you know, renewable sources of energy that are not as polluting, that do not, you know, contribute to the climate crisis. And, you know, so just literally from just an economic standpoint, from the standpoint of promoting job growth, I just think it makes so much more sense to shift resources and focus into the clean energy field, you know? That's, that's where the jobs of the future are going to be, that's where the growth of the future is taking place. And, you know, the best part is, it comes without us having to jeopardize our well-being, you know, having to deal with these catastrophic wildfires every year, or these epic droughts that seem to keep happening in our state. You know, this is, this is real stuff, it's people's lives, it's people's livelihood, and I really hope that you will make the right decision in, in voting against this ordinance. Thank you.
Hi, this is Stan Eschner with Trio Petroleum calling, and I wanted to make a comment regarding tonight's meeting and with the commission, and it has to do with Agenda Item Number One, Agenda Item One. And I'd just like to make this kind of a statement, that commercial oil fields are only developed where the underground oil accumulation exists, and they're oblivious to above-ground circumstances of any kind. For example, there are longstanding oil fields where no housing existed once, that subject to later encroachment by modest homes and businesses that came into proximity. But there are also newer oil fields successfully found and developed in very wealthy and densely populated areas such as Beverly Hills and downtown Los Angeles. So oil fields have nothing to do with the wealth, the poverty, or, or what's ongoing above ground, it's just where they are. Then as to the rhetoric about oil fields causing asthma and cancer, it's just ridiculous. There, there are thousands of oil field workers, they're making their whole careers, working in the middle of the oil fields for their entire careers, and none of them have ever complained of oil field-caused illnesses, such as the people that are the alleged environmentalists trying to use for an excuse to get us to stop our work. It just, it just isn't true. And I just wanted to make those two points, could make many more, but that's enough on this call. So thank you. Bye.
Hello, my name is Catherine Dunther, K A T H E R I N E, Q U N T H E R. And I'm calling because I do not want more oil and gas drilling in Kern County. A threat to my family, a threat to our climate, a threat to good, clean, green energy jobs. Please do not approve the revisions to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-A focusing on local oil and gas permits. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Mike Umbro, U M B R O. Thank you for offering a platform to provide comments from an operator's perspective. Our company, Premier Resource Management, was formed in 2017 to develop an asset in North Bell Ridge, a long-developed Kern County oil field. To date, we have spent over one million dollars improving our lease by abandoning orphan wells, retiring legacy facilities, and conducting extensive environmental reviews. We have spent our capital with over fifty vendors, the vast majority of which are service companies from Kern County. We are located in a well-established oil field, the nearest homes are over thirty miles away, that's a setback of over a hundred and fifty thousand feet. The closest commercial water well is twenty miles from our lease. All geological zones contain high TDS, salt, and high oil saturations. Our lease receives less than seven inches of rainfall each year. The characteristics look promising for oil field development, particularly from an environmental perspective. However, uncertainties in environmental permitting in Kern County and extended review of the Kern County zoning ordinance have delayed our project. Further delays threaten the economics of our development and create unnecessary regulatory risk. We are asking the supervisors to act now to establish a safe, fair, and comprehensive review process. PRM will spend over a hundred and twenty million dollars with Kern County companies in the first sixty months of development. That's a huge impact. Please certify the supplemental recirculated environmental impact report 2020-2021, adopt Sections 15091 and 15093, adopt mitigation measure monitoring program, and adopt revisions to Title 19 of the Kern County zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Elise Calfayan, E L I S E. Last name is K A L F A Y A N. I reside in Glendale, but I spend time up in the mountains near Lebec in Kern County, looking down toward the valley. And I think Kern County needs to invest in good-paying green jobs and be looking for them very aggressively, and not invest anymore in drilling and burning fossil fuels. You need to find other jobs for the residents of your county, and you need to protect the residents of your county from the pollution from oil and gas drilling. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Sarah Gernbacher. I live in California City. I'm calling to oppose the ordinance 2020-A. It would greatly affect my health, my family's health, and it would be horrible for the climate crisis. We need more green, good-paying jobs, not more oil and gas drilling. It's the exact opposite direction that we want to go in. It will only spell disaster for our communities, our health, and our planet. This is wrong. I stand with Kern County, state no to Title 19 Kern County zoning ordinance 2020-A. We must stop the approval. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Craig Barry, C R A G B A R R Y, and I'm calling from Delray, ninety minutes away, Kern County, and yeah, we just need a moratorium on all oil drilling, fracking, and we actually need to eliminate these fossil fuels from our, from the planet. We need to go green, we need electric energy, we need solar, wind power, anything else that's not destroying the planet, to have a green, sustainable future for our grandchildren. Thank you very much.
This phone call is referencing the planning commission's Agenda Item One. My name is Dave Nor, I'm currently the mayor of the city of Taft. I have to call in and comment on this agenda item because there is so much misinformation out there regarding this. The oil and gas industry in the state of California, and Kern County in particular, is the most responsible professional group of individuals that have ever explored for, produced, and refined oil and gas in the history of this country. Misinformation regarding the fact that the oil and gas industry is disproportionately negat-
negatively affecting the people of color and the poor and their quality of life could not be further from the truth. I began my oil field career working as a roustabout in January of 1981. I've done every hard, hot, dirty job in this man's oil field, other than being a roughneck. Up until yesterday, when I worked side-by-side with the men and women in the industry, I have never seen a more diverse workforce in our industry. Men, women, LBG, TQ plus two, black, brown, yellow, all races, colors, creeds, and religions, working shoulder to shoulder, side-by-side, indifferent to those differences because we're all there to do a job and make a good living, a living that is far more than a living wage, paying four or five times typically what somebody working in agriculture and the food industry makes. This is a proud, professional workforce that is constantly being trained and recertified in all matters relevant to our industry, whether it is the AP-CD's requirements, the-
Hi, my name is Ben Lamb, and I urge the Kern County Planning Commission to block the oil and gas ordinance. I own a cow farming business and this ordinance would severely impact my business. The toxins in the groundwater and soil released by oil and gas would harm the health of humans, workers, and livestock. In Louisiana, the release of fracking toxins into cow pasture resulted in the deaths of 17 cows in one hour. In Pennsylvania, 140 cows died from exposure to fracking wastewater. This ordinance would harm livestock and fields in Kern County and cause the loss of jobs. Oil and gas drilling releases toxic chemicals that harm communities of color and increases rates of cancer and respiratory diseases like COVID-19. These toxic chemicals will pollute the air we breathe and the water we drink. We must invest in clean, renewable energy instead. This ordinance would devastate Kern's agriculture, health, environment, and local economy. Climate change worsened wildfires are already burning down Kern County, and more oil drilling will make this far worse for our children. I oppose this ordinance. Thank you.
Hello, Eda Yoman in Santa Monica, California. Uh, I am against the oil well that you're, uh, because of the climate change, and, um, thank you.
Good afternoon, my name is Jim Grant, I live in Fresno County. I'd like to offer my opposition to the proposed expansion of oil drilling in Kern County. There are so many reasons. There are pollution from oil and gas drilling is a threat to obviously every family's health. I'm concerned about the climate change caused by drilling and burning fossil fuels, not only where I live, but in the rest of the state. The toxic wastewater from oil and gas drilling is used for irrigating crops, which increases the health risks to all families and all communities who will be ever eating the food that is grown there. And again, Kern County needs to invest in good-paying green jobs safer for not only my family and my community, but for the whole state. Thank you for considering not only the immediate need of your county, but for the rest of us, that you will give a good example of taking care of future expansion, to not continue it, and to look at green jobs and a safer, cleaner, healthier environment for everyone, especially those living in Kern County. Many are disadvantaged, many are monolingual, many do not have much education or finances. Please think of the least among us and take care of them and their future. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Megan Agad Gil, M-E-G-H-A-N-A, my last name is Agad Gil, G-A-D-G-I-L. I'm an internal medicine physician and educator in California, and I'm calling to express my serious concerns about zoning ordinance revisions 2020A that are being proposed. It's very clear that burning and extracting oil and gas are profoundly harmful to the health of our communities, especially children, and these health harms are both severe and very long-lasting. I would like to urge the Kern County, um, decision-maker to recognize that the damage to the health of Californians, as well as to the climate of our precious planet, uh, from this decision could be really irreversible and devastating. As a physician in California, I will strive to preserve health in our communities and protect our patients. Drilling and using oil and gas goes against these efforts. It's urgent that we change course. This is why, again, I urge you, the Kern County Planning Commission, as well as the Kern County Board of Supervisors, to reject this ordinance. Thank you so much for your time.
That was the last one.
That was our last voice message. Madam Clerk, by any chance, is the caller from last night on the line? Madam Chair, yes, Bridget Beard is on the line. Okay, Bridget Beard, please make sure your, your phone is unmuted and press star six and announce your name.
Hello, I'm Bridget Beard. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, please proceed.
I live in unincorporated Kern County. I strongly support the revised EIMR and Kern County's updated oil ordinance. Kern County does not have the authority to completely prohibit oil and gas drilling and operations necessary to exercise the rights of owners of the oil and gas rights. Much has been said about fossil fuel pollution, natural gas is extremely clean burning fossil fuel, but oil drilling and oil operations produce hydrocarbons which are refined to make fossil fuels. The largest source of fossil fuel pollution comes from emissions related to transportation and equipment using gasoline or diesel, not oil and gas drilling, hydraulic fracturing, or oil and gas operations. Personal vehicles are one of the sources of these emissions. Other sources include trains and big rigs, which transport virtually all our goods we use in our daily lives, including but not limited to food, medicines, clothing, building materials, and much more. Kern County's pollution level is also impacted by out-of-state and Mexican big rigs, which travel along highways in Kern County, but are not required to comply with California's strict emission requirements. Wildfires in Northern California this past summer demonstrated that a large portion of Kern County's air pollution originates in areas to the north of Kern County, which would include emissions from traffic and industry in those areas. Many areas of oil and gas operations in Kern County have nearby farming activities which also produce pollution. Bad air and arsenic are often present prior to oil and gas drilling in a given area. I hope you will consider, um, these facts when you vote whether or not to approve the EIR and the revised oil ordinance, and I hope you do approve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you, Bridget. Madam Chair, uh, I would just like to state for the record that Bridget Beard was on the line last night, was a registered caller for the hearing, and was just having technical difficulties with her phone at the time, so that, uh, it was up to the commission to allow her to speak this morning or not.
Great, thank you so much. Okay, we will close, um, public presentations and announcements on this item. Uh, we will return it back to our commission and staff for final comments and deliberation. Ms. Oviat, would you like to start us off?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the commission. So all of these are serious comments, they are serious concerns that you have heard yesterday, uh, last evening and today. Um, all of these concerns and studies that have been referenced, we have included them in the SREIR. They are part of the detailed analysis that was done. We have not stepped over these serious concerns. Our issue is that the oil and gas industry has a legal right to extract their minerals, and they are part of an ongoing industry. The demand for oil and gas with 32 million cars has not abated in California yet. So the balance that we have brought to your commission is that policies are changing in the state of California, and you have heard from impassioned supporters of this. We are not disputing the effects of climate change, we have not stepped over that in any of this SREIR. However, an immediate change is not possible. So over the next 15 years, which is the 15 years that the, uh, policies of the state of California of phasing out the sales of gas-fueled cars in the state by 2035, as well as the initiatives on electrification, there will be innovations in carbon management, Kern County will be a center of that, there will be California policy initiatives that affect the industry and the economy of Kern County. And during that time, we need thoughtful and innovative planning. Environmentally protective oil and gas production over those 15 years is part of this planning, but it cannot be accomplished without this local permitting. The current level of regulation that we have in the zoning ordinance, and that under CalGEM's authority, will not protect our natural resources and quality of life here in Kern County. It will not provide a pathway for our industry that provides jobs, property taxes, for our stability as we go through this transition. The demand is still there, there are many pieces to this transition that the state of California is forging. And so Kern County has thoughtfully and carefully, under the direction of our Board of Supervisors, referred to my department, this question. How do we have environmentally protective oil and gas extraction that provides certainty and stability for the industry at the same time that we are growing our green energy, alternative fuels? How does all that fit together? And since the industry is the ones who are leading the innovation, they are part of the solution. So while you have heard, and I, I absolutely heard, the frustration, the concern, that is the point of this ordinance. Without this ordinance, there are no protections, there are very few protections. Certainly, the CalGEM authority, the casings are good, the hydraulic fracturing, all of that, but the land use protections are just not part of what they do. That is part of the sequel review. And so my point is locally-generated zoning is what we do. Your commission is more experienced than any in California with permitting large-scale solar and wind. You have done more environmental impact reports than any commission. You are experts in green energy, and you know that that has environmental impacts as well that needs mitigation. There is no land use, there is no magic land use that doesn't have impacts on the air and other things. And while oil and gas has far-ranging impacts, we do believe and we do recommend that this SREIR and the 74 binders that you see in your chambers have comprehensively and carefully looked at what we can mitigate to protect people's health, and what are uncertainties that you may need to do a statement of overriding consideration. Therefore, we are recommending the changes to the zoning ordinance with this reduced cap that would produce a potential, not necessarily, but a potential of 40,445 new wells over 15 years, that reflects the balancing of government regulation with private property rights, the needs of the market, and our industries as the energy portfolio policies of California You have a revised recommendation in your addendum, which I can read into the record if your commission so requests, and we're available for any questions that have been engendered from this, uh, public testimony. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yes, I would, uh, request that staff read into the record the recommendation of the planning department that would, uh, go before this, uh, commission, as well as towards the board of supervisors. So I'd like that read into the record in its entirety. Thank you.
Madam Chair, the recommendation is to recommend the Board of Supervisors certify the supplemental recirculated environmental impact report 2020/2021, adopt revised section 15091 findings of fact, and section 15093 statement of overriding considerations, adopt revised mitigation measure monitoring program, adopt revisions to Title 19 of the Kern County zoning ordinance 21121 as recommended by staff.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oviat. I will return it back to our commission for comments and questions. Anyone want to start? Mr. McGinnis?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, just, I wanted to point out a few things here. I know on this commission, we, as, uh, Ms. Oviat's pointed out, we've sat through a lot of permitting requests for green energy, and, uh, I, I think the people that may have commented and may not have realized that, that we do a lot of work, almost every meeting's got a solar project involved. So, you know, I, I just wanted to point that out. Um, and, and there are a lot of people against wind, solar, nuclear power. Um, if we see our meetings, we have people that are notably against certain things. Um, and, and we know that the legislature is limiting the import and export of renewables, that there's not a, uh, uh, there's really a difficult path moving renewable energy back and forth across the grid, and there's, there's no nuclear power improvement possible, but, uh, solar power is increasing. Um, the commission, we've approved many projects, but, uh, these projects, of course, as mentioned, aren't necessarily supporting the tax base as quickly, and then these green jobs everybody's talking about or mentioning, no one's offered them, really, just say, here's a green job and here's what we're gonna do. There's not like a, a bank of green jobs sitting there that anyone has that says, oh yeah, this is gonna replace everything we're doing. I'd also like to mention that California is, I think, the second-largest consumer petroleum product, products, the largest consumer of gasoline and jet fuel, which 90% of our refined fuels are used for transportation, and California is 10% of the US refining capacity. Gasoline demand in the United States has gone up by about a billion gallons a year in the past decade, and global oil consumption continues to increase. I know it slowed down with, with the COVID, but it's, it's bounced back up to where it was. So, so that said, it's not realistic to say that, uh, fossil fuels are going away tomorrow. Uh, just people mentioned, you know, oil industry's dying, it, it may be capped or maybe transitioned to something else or plateaued, but, but it's not going away tomorrow, and neither is gasoline demand. Uh, we're gonna try in California, I guess, to have no gasoline sold cars in the next 15 years, but, again, that's, that's still gonna have gas stations, you're still gonna have gasoline-powered cars, you're still gonna have them across the country and the world. That market doesn't change necessarily on a dime. So, I, I think the other thing is people aren't realizing that they're not gonna, we're not gonna have new wells going in if the price of oil isn't sufficient for those wells. So if, if oil consumption and gasoline consumption is going down, then there won't be more wells, we're just doing, going through an additional permitting process, uh, more regulation than, than less. So, you know, what you're seeing here is basically a, a market response potentially, but there won't be more wells drilled if there's no more demand for oil and the price isn't sufficient. So, you know, I know one person mentioned- That's going to hurt underserved communities. It's going to lead more people to energy poverty. It gives us less energy security. Yeah, we do need, and we do need pollution mitigation. We need ways to reduce that. And we do need, we do need to look at water, but a lot of these environmental issues that were brought up are also from ag and other related problems. And somebody mentioned, you know, we're doing all this for a little bit of money. Well, I don't know, $80 million, $200 million for a county is not a little bit of money, and we're not just doing it for the money per se, but we're doing it to survive and make a community. And again, if we don't have some sort of revenue or some way to transition things, all these things people want to see with green jobs aren't and can't happen. You can't just shut it down tomorrow and expect all this magic to happen with respect to infrastructure. We need to build it, and we need to plan for it, and that's what we're doing here. But again, we're not the green jobs forum. We're not the green jobs providers. We're just looking at planning for what we need for our future, and those have to be provided by the marketplace and by the legislature as well. I mean, it's a whole group of things that have to come together. So, I'd like to see, you know, I'd like to see we have no more rolling blackouts. I'd like to see we have energy security. The transition is onto greener energy. There's no question about it. We see it every meeting we have here, so we know that, but we just can't close our eyes to the fact that there's going to be a transition potentially in fossil fuels, and that global demand for fossil fuels is not going to turn off tomorrow, and despite the best wishes and intentions of everything of a lot of the callers, we just have to plan for a better future. We can't ignore the present in that regard. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner McGiffney. Any other commissioners?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Sprague.
First, I want to thank all the public that called in regarding this matter and this ordinance. We listen to you. We've read our material. We've read the staff report thoroughly and investigated it, and I think that, I mean, I commend the oil and gas industry as well as the Kern County Planning Department for the wonderful job they did in putting together documents and ordinances that protect the public's health and environmental welfare and still provides for the daily production of petroleum products which feed you, lets you drive your car, your truck, move you by transportation. It's a necessary thing that's there. We've lived with it for many, many years. It's one of those things that we do have to live with until things do change, and they are changing. In regards to this report that we have here, which is very, very complete and very, very well-done, with emphasis on protecting the environment and protecting health and welfare, I would support this project, and I would be prepared to make a motion on it unless other commissioners have comments and would wish to speak on it.
I will make one quick comment and then open it back up. So, we've received over 30 live callers, over 100 voicemails, hundreds of letters, and I just want to address a few quick items. One is the commenters outside of Kern County. A lot of their suggestions were to transition to green renewable energy, and I think there's some misinformation about the level in which Kern County has engaged in that industry. Tatchpe Mountains, all the way over into East Kern, we are the example for California when it comes to green and renewable energy, and it's unfortunate that a lot of the callers had not done their research and taken that into account. And so, I appreciate these suggestions on how Kern County should innovate and move towards a greener future, and I don't think anyone in Kern disagrees with those suggestions, and I definitely don't think our planning department is ignoring any of those suggestions. We are actually taking that and making it our future here in Kern. So, I wanted to make sure that commenters on that topic knew that our commission and all of the residents in Kern County are very aware of green energy and the renewable energy sector. Another comment that concerned me was that we, as a commission, we in Kern County are not prioritizing public health, and I would like to say that many of you may not be able to see these binders here, but there are hundreds of thousands of pages of science sitting in front of me, hundreds of pages that I have read of science, and this is science, not feeling. And while many callers expressed their concern over the science tonight and today, I believe that our commission has given numerous examples of the science over personal feeling, and that's something that I want people to know I've taken into consideration. And lastly, I just want to thank Ms. Oviot and Ms. Hoover and their team for months and years of hard work, no matter the outcome in the decision, they have put in the time and the resources to make sure that our commission, that the Board of Supervisors, has been given all the information needed, and I just really want to thank them because this was not an easy task to take on. And I'll leave my comments with this. These measures exceed every other permitting requirement in the state that was said by Ms. Oviot early in the evening yesterday, and with that, I think stability equals equity here in Kern, and I will open it up to my commissioners for final comments or to continue with a motion.
Is your mic on, sir?
I will, like Commissioner Sprague, say a motion before that. All I want to say is I want to say thank you to the public for taking the time to call and comment on this project. I also want to thank our staff for taking the time to get all the comments into our staff report and have the detail involved for our review to make sure no one was left out to be able to speak on this project. And I know environmental impact is something that we must always strive to find a way to help improve and protect, and this is not an easy topic, and I actually just commend everyone and their efforts on both sides to try finding a solution. That solution may be, but I want to thank everyone for their time and efforts. And with that, turn it over to Commissioner Sprague.
With that, Madam Chair, if there are no other commissioner comments or actions, I am prepared to make a motion to approve the project as read into the record by staff and move forward with this project.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McGiffney. We will take a vote. Bear with us as we adjust technical upgrades from last night. Can I ask that we put the vote back on screen again? Okay, can we, commissioners, please replace your vote so we can have it on the screen.
Okay, four eyes, one abstained.
Is there a right to appeal for this, or this will move on to? Madam Chair, this is a recommendation before your commission, or your commission is making a recommendation on this action. Therefore, there is no right to appeal. This project will be duly advertised for consideration by the Board of Supervisors. Great, thank you. Thank you to everyone this, today, and also for yesterday evening. We are now at the adjournment item of our agenda.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion and second. Our next Planning Commission meeting is February 25th. Thank you.
Thank you.